Learn how Florida power and light combines solar and.
Good evening, this is the Wednesday, February 26, 2014, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from February 12.
So move.
I second.
Okay. Joel moved, Wendy second. Are there any discussion, corrections? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes of the 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Deb is abstaining. All right, thank you. Next item is correspondence, and Bill, you've got two things here. The first is Schort's Chapel, which I believe was in our packet, a letter.
Correct. The, a letter was, our office received a letter from Schort's Funeral Chapel, really kind of directed to our department, but also, I guess I was gonna share it with the commission, and I had Mike do some research on the situation and how that use became to be established in the location on Sixth Street, this 1225 Sixth Street. As we understand, there was a special use permit that was issued in 1981 for that use in that location. We have had some difficulty establishing the authority under which that special use permit was issued at that point in time. There were no specially permitted uses that were listed in as own district at that point in time, and specifically, this use, or mortuaries, or undertaking establishments, was a specifically excluded use in the neighborhood business district at that point in time. The special use permit was issued by the city council, and I think the business prior to that time had been located downtown, made the move out onto Sixth Street, and has been there well over thirty years now, operating a location that seems to be fairly consistent and compatible with surrounding land uses and other land uses that are generally permitted in the neighborhood business district. It does place the owner into somewhat of a difficult position, and they have a desire to potentially look at some small accessory structure additions or expansions of the use on the property, and without it really being into conforming use status, that's not something we can generally permit. We have looked at it, you have a number of other type of establishments and uses in that district, such as churches, and monastery synagogues, mosques, and professional and other offices, that are permitted in the neighborhood business district, and the request of the owner is for us to consider amendments to the neighborhood business to include mortuaries or funeral homes as a permitted use in the neighborhood district. Staff feels this is, I mean, it's obviously this use has functioned there for thirty years, it seems to be compatible in that area, seems to be consistent with other uses that are named in that district, and so I don't think we have any objection to that. Certainly, we probably want to take a look at all of the districts and the various terminologies that are utilized and standardize that across districts, also make sure that there may be other districts that that could be an allowed use within, and make sure that's incorporated as well as we do this, but I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention. Generally legislative amendments to the zoning code can be initiated either by the Planning and Zoning Commission or the city council, those are really the two bodies, and wanted to see what the thoughts of the commission were, and then we could proceed appropriately from there.
Okay. Discussion of this?
Yeah, I mean, functionally, it seems, I think it's like, it's like Mike said, that it's a church, you know, it's sporadic, heavy usage, consistent with a church, and that's a permitted use. I mean, in terms of actual land for area use, it doesn't seem like it's adding or subtracting anything.
And it's probably not likely that we will see a number more of them pop up.
I would agree, it seems like it fits with having the chapel, it fits with the church uses that are special kind of use conditions allowed, right? Conditional uses, what I meant to say.
Those are actually by right.
Yeah, right, right.
Permanent uses by right in the district.
So, yeah, it seems like it's consistent.
I guess I'm trying to visualize what impact might be of such a use on some of the other NB districts.
Yeah, I think very similar to other permitted uses, you might look at some sort of language or limitation on crematories, or that kind of, that type of activity that might be happening, because those could have, if it's a neighborhood business, it's generally in close proximity or surrounded to a residential area, so you may look at limiting that type of use or having that component be something that might require an additional level review, but from a funeral chapel, you know, some embalming and other activities that are all happening in closed building, I don't see that there would be any impacts that we would anticipate.
Usually, it's hard to know what goes on in most funerals, in all honesty. They sort of have an outward appearance, and whatever goes inside, it's sort of left your imagination, anyway.
So I suspect we'll need to do a little bit of research on that topic, just to make sure that we are adequately addressing the situation, but from what I understand of the nature of the use, I don't see inconsistencies or incompatibility, and the use is in a good location right now. We don't want to put the property owner in a difficult position.
Is there any hint why it was specifically excluded the first time around?
No, I really don't know. There were two different terms that were used. In the code at that point in time, there were mortuaries and there were undertaking establishments, which functionally were defined as being the equivalents. Mortuaries were listed as a permitted use in the central business district, and that's where the establishment was located previously, but the neighborhood business district excluded undertaking establishments and secondhand stores, and I don't know why that was the case at that point in time.
They don't seem to have anything to find.
I think I was around way back when that was done, and I think the philosophy was that we anticipated there'd mainly be mini grocery stores and things of that sort, like the Circle K that was located in that spot many years ago, and I just don't, I don't think that we were visualizing a broader range of businesses.
Yeah, certainly larger scale retails, such as automobile car lots, or repaired garages, or gas, you know, service stations, gas stations, those were, bars were not anticipated. The reason, you know, and, you know, if you continue along the line of that language, and this is on page two of the memo that Mike did, you know, it talks about theaters and auditoriums, undertaking establishments and secondhand stores. I just don't know how the undertaking establishment fits into that whole grouping.
They don't cremate there, do they?
I don't believe so. Not, no, I, no, I don't believe so.
That would be a whole different set of permits for a furnace, like.
Yeah, that's, you know, and that is probably something you don't want to have, maybe in a neighborhood business district, but just the activities I understand occur there, I think, are no different than a church and the funeral services you would have associated with a church facility, and similar scale parking facilities you would have with a church, and similar type of peaking of activities and events that would happen in concentrated time periods and then dispersed, so I don't know how undertaking establishments got lumped in with all of those other uses, as being something that was not permissible, but it seems like something that we could probably accommodate fairly decently. If that's the consensus of the commission, we'll do some additional research, we'll bring back a proposal at an upcoming meeting and continue the conversation.
So that sounds like your general stance with the notion of research issues around cremation, and perhaps, I think I heard Bill suggest, research the issue of mortuaries across all our zoning districts, that is, we may wish to include them in motor business or general business, or some other, just by way of kind of completeness in, since the activity has come up. Okay? So I think by a set, and we will direct staff to work on bringing forward some sort of legislative change. Okay. The other item is the recommended readings. Any status update on that, Bill?
That's just a reminder that we did get this posted up today, so if you go to the, and so this is the concept of having three to five, probably web-based articles for the most part, to share among the group, so, I've actually entitled it Shared Readings, and it's not necessarily recommended, but maybe as collectively as a group, as we come across articles of interest to the group, that we can post those as shared readings. Right now, we just kind of tucked them here on this, on this location, it's a simple link in, oh, I should scroll, this is just on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the city website.
Yes, put that up, because it wasn't.
So if you were to go up to government and commissions, and then select the Planning and Zoning Commission on the left-hand side, this would bring you to this page, and then this is not a very attractive, but very simple PDF of the articles for the month, with the URLs to those articles. I think there are five here to start with, and I think the thought was that we would just kind of announce it at the beginning of the month, and at the second meeting of the month, allow an opportunity for discussion, reaction, as a result of those readings, so those are up on the website.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you. And then the, of course, admonition to you is to be looking for things worth sharing. Great, thank you, Bill. Joel, Transportation Commission.
Sorry, just one other item, before we get off correspondence.
Oh, yes.
That we didn't have on here, but it just kind of came up recently. There is a, just to update the group, there is a bill in the legislature that has been introduced in the House, it's House Bill 480, that would prohibit and preclude counties and cities or local government from imposing design standards on commercial or industrial projects. It'll be specifically design standards that require any type of structural alteration to the building, so anything beyond just surface finishes is the way Bill reads. And so, there is, within LUPA, within the Local Landings Planning Act, there is a listing of all the subjects and topics that comprise the plans, that the community's long-range planning document needs to address, and community design is one of those elements. And so there are two changes that would occur as a result of the bill. The first would be to modify that community design element to specify voluntary building design recommendations, rather than a more directive, you know, consider, study, and you can make recommendations about community design elements, it's making specify, you can make recommendations about voluntary design, building design elements. And then it would modify 676511, which is the section of LUPA that authorizes the establishment of a zoning ordinance, and it would essentially prohibit any local jurisdiction from establishing design standards beyond surface finishes for commercial and industrial projects. And so, the implications to the city are probably twofold, in the large retail establishment design manual, there are, you know, building wall articulation standards that are entry location, multiple entry requirements, related to large retail structures in order to try to break up and reduce the visual appearance and massing of those buildings, so that would be precluded, and the city would probably need to repeal that. And then in Legacy Crossing, there are some elements in the overlay in the design guidelines in the core area of Legacy Crossing, that do relate to some to materials, some to corner treatments, articulations, step backs at heights, and so if it's successful, that also would probably need to be modified and repealed. So, that passed the House last, passed the House just recently, on a vote of fifty to seventeen, I'm forgetting my days here, it must have passed on Tuesday, or Monday. It was on the agenda on Friday, they didn't get to it. Monday, they had a second session in the afternoon, and it passed fifty to seventeen on the House floor, and it's been referred to the Senate.
That's progress.
Just an update.
Can you people hear?
Are we in a position to send a letter as a group?
The mayor sent a letter to the House committee when it was under consideration for the committee, it made actually to the House of the floor, and threw sooner than we thought it would, so I'm anticipating we'll consult with the council mayor and see whether another layer would be sent to the Senate. The Association of Idaho Cities is trying to assess the best position for cities to take in response to legislation, whether it is to try to oppose it, or to suggest amendments to the proposal. The, you know, the concern that is being voiced by those that are proponents of legislation is that oftentimes, they feel these standards are somewhat nebulous and arbitrary, and are, you know, not well-defined or clear and concise and understandable, and so I think AIC is looking at trying to suggest amendments that could address that aspect of it, and require that any design standards be clear and understandable, but I don't know that that, at this point in time, I don't know if AIC has defined what their tact is going to be in addressing it in the Senate.
So that would, I don't know which communities in Idaho have design standards for historic districts, but.
Historic districts are protected, so that is one exception, are historic districts.
Have there ever been any conflicts here in town because of the design standards that are in?
The only time that we have applied design standards in town, obviously we haven't had any projects unless Legacy Crossing had forward to be applied to. We have had an application to the expansion and reopening of Walmart, but it was somewhat of a limited application because we were dealing with an existing building, and so we had an opportunity to have some application in that instance, and we didn't have any conflict. That, right now, is an administrative process between staff and the applicant, and we didn't have any real difficulty in getting through that process. The building elevation that we received upfront initially was compliant, we worked on a few details, but it wasn't anything that was, I guess from my perspective, I didn't hear from the design team working on behalf of the applicant and the client, that we were, that it was a difficult process to get through, we actually managed to get through it fairly quickly, so.
It also seems like it would limit capacities for communities to introduce form based codes.
It is, I mean, you can, I think you could still regulate the placement of the building, but the actual, what the building envelope looks like, and walls, and, yeah, I mean, it's.
Sort of bulk and form, rather than just land use as a only strategy.
Certainly for commercial and industrial projects, which is only, which is only the types of uses this would apply to. So I'll keep you posted, I'll just let you know that it did make through the House, and on to the Senate.
Any other correspondence?
Done.
Now, Joel.
Short report, the last meeting was two weeks ago, last meeting of the Transportation Commission was two weeks ago. One of the more interesting things that we talked about was landscaping and trimming issues on public rights of way, and basically, the city does have a program of, well, trying to, trying to circulate around various quadrants of the city, every four years, and does trimming, also responds on a complaint basis. Saw some interesting pictures of landscape intruding into the rights of way, and some interesting pictures of some problem, corner sideline issues, most of them relating to topography, a few relating to trees. Ordinances did not allow the city to cut down trees within the site triangle, although I guess they can be pruned, and they can, the shrubbery can be pruned. The next meeting of the commission is, I believe, in two weeks, and I have not seen an agenda yet.
Thank you. Next is open microphone. This is a point in our agenda where members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda, nor currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Anyone wishes to avail themselves of the opportunity to come and speak with us, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Any takers? All right. I will welcome this large audience, even though there are no takers. Oftentimes, we seem to do this alone in this room, so it's nice to have you here.
Extra credit.
I understand what one side of the aisle is doing. All his names, Wendy? Okay, next is further review of ADU project public input, and then we will provide staff some direction at the end of that.
We emailed this out electronically to the commission before the meeting, but decided to bring a copy, so if you had one, you could keep it for your own reference. And this is going to be.
You have a few extras.
I do. So I will briefly recap what we talked about last time, so we shared this at the last meeting, and there was a request to look at responses based upon the zoning district that the respondent resides within, and to kind of break out how we might see a difference in opinion regarding accessory dwelling units between those that may reside within single-family zoning districts versus those that may reside within two-family and multifamily zoning districts. We also included on here the citizen survey question response, so as you may recall, we included a couple of questions in the 2012 citizen survey that the city does every two years, and that goes out to a random sample of 1,200 households in the community, typically receive somewhere around 400 of those back, and so the commission, commissions are solicited to provide questions that could be added on to that survey, generally two questions, each city commission, and for the 2012 survey, the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to ask questions about ADUs, and there really were two questions that we asked, the first of which generally was would they support accessory dwelling units, and these are the small-scale accessory apartments, they're generally accessory to a single-family dwelling, commonly referred to as mother-in-law apartments, granny flats, et cetera, but aren't, and generally aren't limited only to family members, they can be really, any individuals may be able to reside from the ADU. So we did ask the two questions of whether they would support it in their neighborhood, and I think we had, what was it, 63% either agreed or strongly agreed that they would support them in their neighborhood, and then the second question that was asked was would they have an interest in adding an accessory dwelling unit to their property if it were permitted, and we had somewhat significantly low response about wanting to add, so we had about 13% that either strongly agreed or agreed that they would like to add an ADU to their property, and so what we saw is a general positive response to allowing them in the neighborhood, but with a limited interest in wanting to add them to their property. The next couple pages, and that's, these pie charts are going to be too small to read, but the next pages, we actually broke out, we do color code the citizen surveys, they are anonymous, but we do color code them based upon the general survey sector that they reside within, the addresses located within, and so we talked about, the first graph there on top is the percentage for the strongly agree and agree that they would support the accessory dwelling units in their neighborhood, and we saw some of the strongest response in what we generally term the city, in the city central south portion that's from Sixth Street, really to Mountain View down to the Highway Eight, had an 84% support, either strongly agreed or agreed that they would support accessory dwelling units in their neighborhood, and then in the northwest quadrant, it's up the A Street corridor, on up Main and everything, everything pretty much west of 95, and north of the Pullman Highway was 78% strongly agreed or agreed, and then the rest of the neighborhoods, maybe the lowest in the south was at 50% agreed or strongly agreed. So you can see that we did have quite a bit of variation depending upon the neighborhood location within the community. The, the second question here, I was just gonna borrow this because I can't read that on the screen. The, the next map below represents the percentage for strongly disagree or disagree about allowing ADUs in the neighborhood, and the highest percentage that disagreed with that statement was the eastern portion of town. We had 60% that thought they would be acceptable in the neighborhood, and then we had 29% that were strongly disagreed with that statement, so that, you know, indicating somewhat a polarization in that area. So we had 29% that either strongly disagreed or disagreed with the statement, and 28% in the south. Those are probably the two that were the highest. The remainder of the city generally ranged from 10% to 16% that either disagreed or strongly disagreed with allowing it to be in use, so again, a fairly low number, with the exception of the east and the south. And it's kind of interesting, you can have areas that had a slightly higher support rate, but the opposition is substantially less in that neighborhood as well. Then the last question was whether they would strongly agree or agree on this map that they would like to add accessory dwelling units to their property, and as I mentioned before, it generally was in that 13, 14% range, but it did range anywhere from 23% in the northwest was the highest response, so just, just about a little over 20% to the lowest on the east side at 10%, and they ranged in the central core, generally 15, 20 to 17%. So, again, in those, in some of these neighborhoods, fairly strong support, but only 15 to 20% of the respondents indicated they would have an interest in adding an accessory dwelling unit to their property. We conducted a second survey when we did the, the open house meeting on the ADUs, we asked the same questions, just trying to get a, just to get a reflection of how those who attended the meeting related to the citizen survey response, and again, the citizen survey is the scientific random sample, it is really the best representative of the community's opinions, those that come out to an open house meeting are a self-selected sample, and so there's bias that can be introduced as part of that, so, you know, we need to be able to understand the differences between the two results. It's good information to have, but we also need to understand that it doesn't, it may not statistically represent the opinions of the community as a whole. We did ask the question, we had a zoning map about where people resided, so whether their residence was located within the R1, the R2, R3, or R4 zoning district, so based upon their responses, and we did have this online as well, and got some responses that way, as, we had 50% that indicated that they were, which is interesting, because that pie chart looks like it's larger than 50%, so, not to ask 50 about that, but this shows 50% in the legend, I'm suspecting it's a little bit more than that, looks like it's maybe closer to 55, that were reported as residing within the R2 district. We had 7% reporting they were in the R1, and then collectively 14% in the R4, and 14% in the R3, so that was kind of the makeup of the respondents that participated in the online separate survey. When we looked at their responses, these are difficult to read, the first question was would they support allowing ADUs in the neighborhood, and this is for all respondents, regardless of what zoning district they're located in. We had 57% that strongly agreed, and 11% that agreed, so you're talking 68% agreed or strongly agreed that they would like to allow them in their neighborhood, and that's a, you know, obviously a slightly higher response than we saw in the citizen survey as a whole, we were closer to 63% at that point. We had 29% that strongly disagreed, and that was probably slightly less than what we had as a community as a whole. We only had 11% that strongly disagreed in the citizen survey response, so I think we probably got more of a polarized group that comes out to something like that, which is pretty typical, so we didn't have many people that just disagreed, it was either strongly disagreed or strongly agreed, so you kind of get the two ends of the spectrum that come out to the meeting. The second question, but interested in adding an ADU if permitted, again, we had, what, 46% that indicated that they strongly agreed or agreed, and that's double, probably almost any other, nearly double, I would say, any other response we had in the citizen survey about the general interest in adding accessory dwelling units to their property, and we were down in the 13%, so again, and strongly disagreed was fairly large there, so we, you know, obviously we had some differences of opinions of participants at the meeting. We then asked a series of questions about whether, how should ADUs be permitted if they're to be permitted? Should they be permitted in all residential zones? Should they be conditionally permitted? Should they only be allowed in the R3 and the R4, which is our two-family and multifamily zoning districts, and, or should they be permitted in the R1 and the R2 district? So we have a variety of responses there, just to kind of get through this fairly quickly is, you know, the general response, we had 50% that agreed, or strongly agree that they should be allowed in all residential districts, indicated on this, this map here between the blue and the red, and we had 36% that strongly disagreed or disagreed. And we had 36% that strongly disagreed or disagreed with that statement. As we moved into the conditionally permitted use category, we had only 29% that strongly agreed or agreed that they should be allowed as a conditional use. Again, those that may want to do it by right, don't want to have to go through the CUP. And those that don't think they should be allowed at all, don't think they should be allowed through CUP. So you're going to see that, that response.
Do you think people understood the terminology clearly enough to really know how they were answering the questions?
We, we had it pretty well defined in all the, if, if they read the materials, I would say they should have had a good understanding. We tried to explain what a conditional use permit was, what a use by right was, and what ADUs were. And, and so hopefully that they did understand then. And again, we had, what, were 54% either strongly disagreed or disagreed that they should be allowed in all zones as a conditional use. So you're seeing those that don't want to see them and those that want to have it by right adding up cumulatively together. Whether they were permitted as an accessory use in the R3 and the R4 district, the strongly disagreed obviously goes away consistently. So you're taking away those that live in a single-family district, well, they don't really have a strong opinion about an R3 or R4 district. So the strongly disagreed and disagreed goes down to 18%, so it shrinks dramatically. The strongly agrees still stays at 43%, I guess. You know, so you have those, those respondents that are in that district and you had 29% that were neutral. And then whether they supported as a permitted accessory use in the R2 and the R1 district, we had remarkably, you, you had again, a pretty strong polarization. So you had 46% that strongly agreed or agreed that should be an accessory use within the single-family districts. And you had 36% that disagreed with that statement. And then the overlay zone was one that I think, that was probably one that people maybe didn't understand or we really didn't show where it would happen. So it was difficult for people to respond to that question. So that one ended up kind of split equally across the pie. So then we also asked questions about the relative importance of regulating elements of ADUs, whether it's design, the location of entrances, owner occupancy, off-street parking, a maximum occupancy limit and a maximum size. And the blue and purple bars there indicate, those that thought that they were extremely important in blue or very important in purple. And again, we saw owner occupancy being very strong, maximum occupancy being very strong, maximum size, and as well as parking. So those all ended up fairly high. Location of entrances and design elements were slightly lower as a whole. Now, we did break this out as the commission requested for the zoning districts. So the first that appears in the group is the R1 and the R2 districts, so those that are our single-family districts going through the same questions, the, whether they support allowing them in their neighborhood. We ended up with right about a 50%, well, 56% either strongly agreed or agreed with that statement, which is pretty close to the 63% across the city as a whole. But we also had another big piece of the pie at 44% that strongly disagreed with the allowance of them in their neighborhood. Whether they were interested in adding, again, we had a stronger response. We actually had 50% that indicated within the R1, R2 district that they were interested in adding an ADU to their property, but again, fairly polarized with.
They got more room on a larger lot.
Yeah. Could be. You have 44% that strongly disagreed or disagreed with that, that they would be interested in adding it. So again, a pretty stronger divide there. As we move to the, would they permit them in all residential, should they be permitted in all residential zones as a permitted accessory use? Substantial 44% of strongly disagree against the 38% of strongly agreed. And anybody correct my math because I'm doing this on the fly. If you see an error, don't be shy. So we have 38% that strongly agree or, or agree with the statement that they should be in all zones. Would you support it in your neighborhood or in all residential zones as a conditional use? Pretty evenly split there. We had, well, no, actually not split at all. We have 70, 82%. Is that right? 82% that strongly disagree or disagree with that statement, that they should be allowed as a conditionally permitted use, which is kind of interesting because you look at, you have 50% that felt that they should, would be allowed in their neighborhood and then 82% thinking it should not be through a conditional use permit.
But it's probably the same thing that people don't, who are.
Those who are interested, don't want to do it, so you're combined. And then asking whether they felt that it should be permitted, permitted in the R3 and the R4. We had large neutral because they don't live there. It's not their, you know, it's not their reported zoning district. So a fair large disagree, which is kind of interesting, and 25% that strongly agreed or agreed. Would you support it as accessory use in the R1, the R2 districts? Again, fairly similar to their, you know, my neighborhood response because obviously we're talking about their zoning district in this question. And so it's pretty consistent with what we saw on the first one. And then the overlay, again, I just think is kind of all over the board in responses.
And this was from the onsite workshop?
Onsite and online.
Oh, online.
We did have it online for three weeks after the close of the, of the meeting. As we look at the elements related to the importance for the items that might be managed as a part of ADU for standards, pretty consistent. Design and location of entrances were probably the lowest. Design was a little bit higher in this district than it was on the aggregate as a whole. And obviously the owner occupancy, parking, maximum, maximum occupancy and maximum size were ranked high. Moving to the R3 and the R4 districts, again, these are our two-family and multifamily districts. Would you support it in the neighborhood? 75%. So obviously a very strong response that was supported. Only 13% that disagreed. And actually you're looking at 83% that agree or strongly agreed in their neighborhood. So a strong response from those districts. Are they interested in adding an ADU between these two? We have roughly 50%, 51% that agreed with that statement, strongly agreed or agreed to be interested in adding, with only 26% indicating they didn't have an interest and 25% indicating they didn't know. And then in the R3 and the R4 districts, would you support it as a permitted accessory use in all residential districts? 50% agreed. Actually, 75% agreed or strongly agreed, similar to the, to the first question, and 26% either disagreed or strongly disagreed. Would you support it as a conditionally permitted use? That was a little bit more mixed. So we had 38% that strongly agreed or agreed and we had 38% that either strongly disagreed or disagreed with that statement. So again, I think it's the same question. And would you support them as being a permitted accessory use in the R3 and the R4 district? Again, now we're talking about their district, so it's the same response as the neighborhood. You had roughly 75%, 76% here that strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. And then asked whether they should be permitted accessory use within the R1 and the R2. We had a 38, 51% strongly agreed or agreed response between the blue and the red. And we had a 26% disagree, strongly disagreed. And overlay zone was kind of a big neutral. That's kind of interesting shape on that one. As we looked at the, the design elements, interesting pattern there, owner occupancy. And this is an area where you've got two-family and multifamily uses. Owner occupancy scored the highest. Off-street parking was lower and maximum occupancy was probably the second highest along with maximum size. And location, the design was much less of a concern in the R3 and the R4 districts. So, and then we also included the comments, the general comments, I think we handed those out last time as well. So anyhow, that's, that was kind of the breakout. As we looked at the responses by zoning district, it's important to recognize this is a small self-selected sample. So we need to be aware of that, but hopefully that helps give a little bit more insight into the responses that we received.
Well, I was trying to remember with the location of entrances, was that primarily something we have in there because of the fire department being able to see the entrance? Or is it to disguise the fact that it's a property with two entrances?
The latter.
The latter.
So many communities require that for any street frontage, only one of the entrances is visible. So it has the appearance in the character of a single-family home. It doesn't have the appearance of a duplex, you know, two, two units there.
Which in a way, if you have a larger volume house and you have a standard that regulates how big the accessory dwelling can be in relation to it, then that would already sort of, it wouldn't look like a duplex anyway really. But it, I mean.
I think you run a situation if you had a basement, for example, two front doors, two addresses.
Gotcha.
You know, if it was detached.
It was attached, yeah, I was thinking detached.
Right, but you may have the attached scenario and that's, I think that's what many communities are trying, they're trying to maintain the perception of a single-family while allowing some infill identification.
Right.
And so that's, that's, I think generally what ours is trying to.
Okay, I didn't think about the attached.
Let me suggest a way to structure, not to preclude discussion, but a way to structure your thought. Place I'd like to come to first would be, do we want to proceed or not with the ADU? And we have some evidence that could argue in several directions. And then if we ever agreed on that, then it may take some clarification or whatever to come to such a point, then we can do some more instruction to staff. Otherwise, we can move on.
Proceed as in continuing the discussion or proceed as in?
Well, proceed as in directing staff to do more work relative to ADUs or conclude, no, we don't even want to go down the path.
I think these would be a great thing to pursue. I think they could be a real addition to the city. So I think it's something that.
And do you need other clarification of the evidence that we have to kind of come to that notion?
It seems like there's, in most zones, except for R1, there's a majority of the community's support indicated by the various survey sources. And so it's not just us sort of wanting to see the comprehensive plan goals realized partially through this, but also just a, obviously a need that people perceive in the community that.
Can I say something here?
Sure.
I'm not part of the committee, but I think that it should be taken into consideration that the actual number of people that responded to this was miniscule. And I don't, there were, what, 50?
Oh, I think we had 29 on this one.
Okay, 29 people. And we're thinking about, or you guys are thinking about making some massive changes in the zoning because of the response of 29 people in the community.
But was the initial idea out of a bigger survey?
Well, the citizen survey would be a sample of 400, random selected, that would, should be within a plus or minus 5% representation of the entire community.
So that is, that's statistically valid?
Yes. So the first couple we went through on the citizen survey, the general support we saw there was, was a valid statistical survey. The smaller sample, now getting into what we did during the open house meeting and that, that is, that is a smaller sample and it looks like we had 28 respondents in that one. So anything, once you get past the maps here, everything indicated on the maps, the first two pages, almost three pages, you know, that's all statistically valid. You know, the additional information, which, you know, you can look at how the, the people who attended and responded correlate to the general response there to kind of get a sense of, do they, is it fairly consistent? And in some ways, I think it, it really is. And it's not, I don't, I don't think it's surprising that the R3 and the R4 areas are much more welcoming of ADUs because that's just, they're in a higher dens, I, I, you know, I think we could have easily predicted that and even just looking at the maps, that represents where those areas are zoned, the east and the south, or you're typically R1 and R2. And those are the areas we'd see less, less support. But, you know, even, even during the citizen survey, we had 60% and 50% between the east and the south that would support them in their neighborhood with a statistically valid, you know, survey response. So, but I, I think it's a good point. The finer detail ones, it is what it is and that's, that's why I did want to make sure we all recognize that. It is a, it is a very small sample and it is a self-selected sample that has bias associated with it. So we just need to treat it as information, but that it's not statistically valid information. If you can correlate that response to your statistically valid information, you can make some inferences that, that, you know, the responses on some of the more detailed questions that we didn't have a chance to ask in citizen survey, you can kind of get a feel for maybe what that response is, could be. And so if we look at, you know, the general, all responses of supporting in their neighborhood at, at 68% compared to 63%, well, so we weren't too far off in, in that general sense. And hopefully, maybe those more detailed questions are reflective of the community, but I would not ever make the statement that we know it to be the case or that it's a, we've statistically determined that that's the response.
But a 400, or the, the 400 response is consistent with other surveys that have been done?
That's our typical response rate and that is the sample size you need to get to to be, you know, to be within a 5% confidence interval. So, so that one, you know, those I'm comfortable with. The other ones, it's just information. I just need to recognize its limitations.
And John, so to, to provide a little bit more background that you might not have, we spent some time in the late summer and fall thinking about this and concluded it seemed interesting enough that we ought to hold a public input session with no language, just, which was the session that we had and the posters you may have seen around. And this is now reflecting on that experience. And the question that I'm trying to answer is a pretty small one. Should we take one more step, which would end up producing another public input session, but with a more refined thing for the public to react to? Because I think, I think what you're sensing and what I think I sense is there's going to be nuance in this idea. The right nuance will be broadly acceptable. The wrong nuance will be broadly unacceptable. And so our task is to, you know, keep feeling the water. Because you can look at the back half of the survey as what might happen in a public hearing, right?
Absolutely.
You'd have a, a group that would stand up and strongly disagree and a group that would, and I'd like, I mean, I know that's going to happen no matter what you do, right? I would like to have us try to tease out as much nuance as possible and maybe come to some conclusions like people in the R1 and R2 zoning districts might be willing for something to happen in the R3 and R4 districts that they don't want to have happen in their own district. And so that might be a way to, to split and come to a kind of compromise that perhaps moves the idea forward without alienating a portion of the community.
Well, then I, yeah, I, I agree with the, reading the comments, you know, they, they're all over the board, but they're usually one way or the other. And the one thing I haven't heard, and I'm assuming you guys have talked about it, is what's going to happen if we go ahead and do something like this when the second occupant of that living quarter comes in? Because, for example, my mother recently died. So that opened up a space for my brother-in-law and my sister to do something with that space that was designed for another person. And they live in Minneapolis in an R1 zone. And so, and somebody in a response here said that we're going to turn everything into R3 or R4, especially R3, by doing this. And has that been a topic that you've, you know, that you people have considered? What did you come up with there?
Well, I, I think that we haven't taken a position yet.
Okay.
I think we have been considering it and I think as we move forward here, we need to work out that. And does that become a deal breaker?
Yeah.
Does it work only in the already high-density, higher-density zones?
Yep.
I mean, if you have a single-family house in an R3 zone, you could have had a duplex there.
Absolutely.
So maybe it is not a big deal there. So I, I think that those are the things that, that we need to hear from the public about and we need to try to sift through in our own minds and try to find, is there a spot? and we need to try to sift through in our own minds and try to find, is there a spot, a sweet spot that is possible or not, recognizing that if we don't hit close to the sweet spot, when it lands on your desk, there'll be another review of our work.
I will now be quiet. Let you, let you people on the committee go back to what you're supposed to be doing and I'm supposed to just be listening to.
I understand your concern there, John. And the thing that stands out to me in, in previous discussions is that the owner occupancy standard is, is a big thing. What people are concerned about in the neighborhoods is that they're, they're going to turn a single-family neighborhood into, into an apartment-type situation. So trying to deal with that by forcing the owner to occupy one of the dwellings so you don't, you can't buy that or when the other person dies or moves on, they can't turn that into an apartment complex.
Right. That's, that was just.
And the same thing with the maximum occupancy that's strongly, people strongly agree with.
So it would also keep sort of landlords who own multiple houses throughout town as rental properties from adding accessory dwellings to gain more.
Absolutely.
Capacity because they'd have to occupy the site that the accessory dwelling went on. So I think it's a check for that potential issue as well.
Now, one more thing. As a personal opinion, not as the city councilman, but as a personal opinion, I think the idea of having a place to rent to the person we would all like to rent to. Quiet, rides a bicycle, doesn't take up any parking. Last time they went to a party was their third grade birthday party. That's what we would all like. Unfortunately, when I was going to school for all of those years, I certainly didn't live in one of those spots, nor would anyone let me. And they were right. But, so from a personal perspective, I think it'd be great to be able to have something like that. But from the perspective of a landlord or the perspective of the police and noise and partying and parking in an R1 zone, R2 zone, unless you have a single-family dwelling in an R3 zone, you could create some real problems.
Here's another, now Nels isn't here, but he will bring up that, because he lives in a single-family neighborhood and the number of the single-family dwellings now, someone can move out of those and rent them to 10 people.
Right.
So the, the situation exists now.
Absolutely.
And this, the addition of this doesn't do anything to make that worse.
No, that, that's true. The only time it makes it worse is if it's next door to you. And, and that's what makes the whole problem worse, not only in this town, but in every town.
But what I'm getting at is you can have a non-owner occupied.
Absolutely.
Single-family, in a single-family neighborhood that's rented to a number of people now without restriction, and this doesn't allow that.
Yeah.
You have to live there if you own the property.
Yeah, with the, yeah.
So it sounds like we're in agreement enough to have staff pursue this more, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, that's the sense that I have.
Well, I, I definitely support proceeding with it. I do have, I do have some misgivings as to how it would get applied in R1 and R2. But, but I think, I'd like to see staff proceed to, to fill in some of the verbiage.
Okay. So, and I think that's what we would like to try to direct staff a bit more on, on some of the subpieces. So I'm sort of, right, so Bill is going to march. We, remember, we've discussed several issues, questions that he raised for us. Kind of want to march down them and get a sense as to how we ought to be directing staff to craft language. Okay?
Perfect. So obviously, one of the first questions is where should they be permitted and what zoning districts? We had discussed previously, we have Ag Forest and the Farm Ranch. So you have probably the spectrum between neighborhoods that are fairly dense that can take them. You, you're moving to a less dense, to the R1, the R2, but then, and then you go beyond that to the Farm Ranch, it has a three-acre lot size, or Ag Forest has got a 40-acre lot size. And you're probably going to be able to more easily accept these on the two extremes, either where it's fairly dense forest, where it's.
Some people might want a caretaker while they're gone for the winter.
Where it's so large and you've got acreage and, and now you're not going to be bothering anybody by having a second, a small dwelling on the property. So our general thought was Ag Forest, Farm Ranch, and then R3, R4, and RO would be by rights where there's a single-family dwelling on the property. The bigger question.
So my question is, so in R3 and R4, why isn't this just simply allowable, just since a duplex is allowable? I mean, but how are, how is this different than just a duplex in an R3 and an R4?
You may not have the minimum lot size for a duplex, for example. So we have a number of lots that are 5,000 square feet or less than that in the R3 and the R4 districts. You need 7,000 square feet in the R3 district to ever have a duplex. There are situations where they may want to try to maintain the character of a single-family and they may want to have this as a detached structure. You would need to have 12,000 square feet to have two single-family dwellings on the property because we're, or 6,000 square feet per single-family dwelling. So if they want to go to a detached situation, that wouldn't, you know, somebody with a 7,000 square foot lot with a single-family dwelling in the R3 wouldn't be able to do that. There, there may be other potential benefits of eliminating some of the utility connections that may exist if you're going to do a duplex, you have to have separate sewer, water, separate water meters. Possibly in an ADU, they might be connected because it is accessory to that single-family dwelling. So there's got to be situations that, yeah, you could do something by right depending upon the situation of your property.
Yeah.
But you may not be able to, and this would just create additional flexibility to try to densify with these smaller additional dwelling units.
Okay.
But, yeah, there'll be situations that they could, they could do this all right, already, but there'll be many that they can't.
So the, Bill's introduction is raising the question, some of, and this is, by way of a proposal that you have had on the table, I think, for a while, that the Ag Forest, Farm Ranch, R3, R4, and residential office where it has a single-family house on it, because that one can bat either way, right? Would do, would, would be able to have an ADU by right. And then the language that Bill is floating here for us to consider is that the other zones, SRR1 and R2, would require a CUP.
Which almost everybody opposed.
Right.
On one side or the other.
People who want it don't want to have to apply.
Right, right. And the people who don't want it, don't want it, so it, yeah, and so it's like doubling that one.
So one option is to take Mizzoula's approach, which was to allow, Mizzoula's approach, which was to allow it in the two-family and multifamily in the beginning, evaluate how it goes, have some in the community, and then expanded it. They did expand it just last year into the single-family districts. The downs, one of the downsides of not going into the single-family districts is we have a number of these already in town that we could kind of bring under the umbrella of compliance rather than in the shadow of, we don't know about it or, or some sort of non-conformant or illegal use status. So if we don't reach into their, and at least provide that opportunity, if they wanted to come get the CUP to, to come into conformance, we miss that. But, you know, that, they're there today already. Their status isn't diminished by this action, it's just we're not creating a path for them to improve the status. And so I think obviously from the results we saw politically, stopping it at the Ag Forest, Farm Ranch, R3 and R4 ROs is going to be the easiest route to take. And there's, doesn't preclude the city from evaluating expansion of that into single-family at some point in the future. But it obviously doesn't maximize the opportunity within the community for, for ADUs. And, and that's, that's the balance.
Is there any legal way to grandfather in the existing ones in R1 and R2 without, without allowing more?
If they were never legally permissible to begin with, then there's really no mechanism.
We're back at the Shortspino Chapel problem, basically.
At least to my knowledge. I can certainly consult the city attorney, but if, if there was no, like, legal premise to establish them, it'd be a difficult measure to, to recognize them or change them.
Yeah.
By the definition of code. If, if they were legally permissible, then they would just become legal non-conforming uses, which means they can, they can continue, can't be expanded, if they could destroy it, can't be replaced. But if they were never legally permissible to begin with, then that, that's, that's the area where we've had districts that never really did have that opportunity, but they still popped up post-World War II.
Well, it's kind of interesting to go back and look at the citizen survey sector of basically where most of the R1 is, it's presumably east of Mountain View. And that has absolutely the lowest, sort of strongly agree that they would like to add them. So it has the lowest demand, pent-up demand to have them. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, it's, and the break tends to be near Hays. In the core is usually where the, you know, there's a little, there are some pockets that, that extend beyond Hays around Lena and Third, between Hays and Blaine. But clearly, east is predominantly all single-family with the exception of, you know, the White Avenue corridor has a lot of multifamily zoning up that corridor. The rest of it, north of White, is all single-family. The south is predominantly single-family with the exception of the Northwood, Steiner. But that's actually kind of, we, we clipped that into the university district. So you can see there's, the university extends across the 95 because we're trying to kind of get compatible uses. So the south's predominantly all single-family, probably more uniformly single-family on the residential side. And we do have some R2 and R3, but that's just those, take for example, Indian Hills, Sixth Edition, we have R2, R3, and R4, and some residential office. Most of that has developed into more of a single-family pattern, twin homes, some towns have predominantly twin homes and multifamily homes. And even some of the R3 districts were limited to single-family only. So, I mean, on the whole, I think, I think that's, that's true. Those are all, one's just kind of the odd one is the city center north from Sixth to D is, is kind of an oddity, especially the, just the divide on Sixth Street is just really a divide of opinion in that area.
But then there was a high demand for people wanting to put them in, I think.
Yeah, central north is where, where I am. I'm on a very single-family area, but there's plenty of apartments to the south of me. Includes some, some residential, a lot of it.
So it seems like the first set, Ag Forestry up to residential office by right with a single-family dwelling. I mean, it seems like that's a slam dunk, in my mind anyway, because it seems like there's not that much opposition to it if you go by the workshop as being a passionate, you know, bringing out passionate people. It seems like if we don't have some mechanism for the SRR1 and R2, that we leave a big problem sitting out there. Plus, we limit the availability of being able to do these. And to my mind, and lastly, there's a thing, it seems like the owner occupied is pretty important if, again, you go by the passionate people came out for the workshop. And I think that's going to be, I don't want to say enforcement nightmare, but it doesn't seem like it's going to be that easy to enforce, which to my mind is another argument for in, in R1 and R2 where people are most passionate about making sure that it doesn't turn into a lead a thousand duplexes bloom, that having it by a CUP to really emphasize the, the rules and restrictions on it would probably be a pretty good thing. And then what's a, what's a, what's a conditional use permit process end up costing, what, a couple hundred bucks, 500 bucks?
Two fifty, two twenty-five now. I mean, it's not.
So it's not that big a deal.
It's not a ton.
In terms of money, yeah.
And time it takes.
Couple months.
Yeah, maybe 45 days.
Yeah.
At the most. The owner occupancy, we're going to have to come up with some de-restruction that goes and records against the property so that it notifies that owner, any future purchaser of the property, that that is a restriction for the occupancy of the, of the ADU. And then we were going to be, we're going to have to rely upon somebody telling us that they don't think the owner's occupying. And then we would, that's the situation.
And there's nothing in that, there's nothing that would preclude if, if somebody rented the single-family dwelling if part of their family used the ADU, right? So as long as they're not renting it out to somebody else.
As long as it's not being rented by, for separate compensation.
I, I like what you've got going there. I would like to add that instead of limiting the expiration at this point to CUP in SRR1, R1 and R2, but to also see what it would look like as a permitted accessory use. Some standards under both, so when we have the public come, they can see something more concrete than they saw the first time. So, okay, this is how it would look under either scenario and they might have a different reaction.
So what I hear you saying is keep the by right where it is, and then there's two choices on the other part, a CUP choice and a by right choice.
An accessory permitted use choice.
In the SRR1 and R2?
And these will all, when I say by right, these will all be a permitted accessory use because the principal use is going to be a single-family dwelling. The ADUs will be accessory to it.
Okay, gotcha.
So it'll, it'll all be, well, probably it'll be included and listed as an accessory use because it really won't be a principal use. But, but I think what Greg's saying is, is actually having it by right is a permitted accessory use in all of these, all residential districts.
Explore the option.
Not closing the door on it.
Right.
Closing the door, yeah. Take more input on.
With the specific standards, it might help address some of the concerns. And once those standards are solidified and being presented, then maybe that'll help align some of the.
And then that, that seems like another thing. The other big concerns were simply number of occupants and size seemed like, like the two biggest ones. And so is there any, any real reason not to say, just put in there hard rules, maximum of two, maximum of 1,000 square feet?
Oh, I think we're going to get there as we march, march down here. So how large is the next piece? This is the language that Bill has floated to us last fall. Where 40% of the single-family dwelling that's there with a maximum of 600.
So if you had a 600 square foot house, you couldn't have a 600 square foot ADU because it wouldn't be subordinate accessory. And so, but if you had a 1,000 square foot home, then it would limit it to 400 square feet in size. If you were 1,500 square feet, you could reach the maximum of 600. Any house larger than that, you're capped at 600. So that's just kind of a, with the idea, these are one-bedroom or studios intended to be occupied by two people.
Then if it is just a tiny little 600 square foot house on it, I mean, would it, would it really be that it could disadvantage to have a second, 600 square foot house on it? I mean, it's, that's a pretty tiny. I mean, I know it's, it's, it's hard to argue that's an accessory.
It depends on, you know, again, it might depend upon the zoning areas it's located with them. If you're in an area that allows a duplex, it may be less, less important. If you're into a single-family neighborhood, then it looks like you have two single-family homes on the property as compared to a home with a small-scale apartment. I mean, I think the relative scale proportionality, the subordinate nature, all of that is really the intended outcomes.
Yeah.
And the farther you move away from that, you know, in, for, for that individual that happens to be in the R4 district or the R3 district where they could just do it, they may not need this if they had a small dwelling.
Is, is 600 the right-sized cap?
I have argued for smaller as being more likely to be acceptable.
How small would you make that?
I guess I'd go with 500.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking of the place that we called Barn, which is about 650. And for those of you who have been there, it seems fairly spacious for two people to live in, so.
I mean, 600 is up to your somewhat standard two-bedroom apartment. Maybe, I mean, 900, you can almost get to a three-bedroom apartment.
So much of it depends, square footage is a weird thing. I mean, if it's under a sloped roof and you have knee walls at five feet, you need more floor area, you know, than you do if you're going up two stories.
But, but you don't count it at five feet, right?
So what's counted into the square? So what's counted into the square footage? And also, if it's one story, then it's different than if it's up in the air. So, I mean, there's a lot of-
Right. It's a question for Bill. If I have a knee wall, and so my slope ceiling is below five feet, now that may be usable space for some purposes, but is it counted in this cap?
You're going to test my memory again. We talked about this last year, about, you know, minimum and getting up to the maximum. So you had to hit the sixty-inch mark, I think, was the minimum, a certain percentage, or certain square feet has to meet the minimum of the seven feet, minimum height. And so, I, we could certainly talk about that, about how we wish to define that. I can certainly, I'm going to actually need to refresh my memory on that whole situation about what percentage we would aim for.
So that might be one of those nuanced areas where, where the square footage, because of the low ceiling height, becomes, it's like mansard roofs in Paris at one point, where they put extra stories on buildings that weren't really there because it was roof.
Right.
So I heard Joel arguing for a little over, and I've heard Wendy asking for some clarification on the definition. Other thoughts around size?
Well, our house before addition was slightly under eight hundred square feet, and it was, it felt huge for me and my wife. So, you know, I would think that six hundred square feet is definitely kind of a maximum size. I'd say that the smaller that allowed size is, the more it's going to mollify, again, the people worried about, about turning their neighborhood into a duplex. So I mean, it's, it seems like we'd like to make it as small as we can and have it still be reasonably functional for two people. And if it's, if we're not really shooting for a regular apartment, you know, maybe it is worth dropping it to five hundred square feet.
Well, if you were to ta, I was just looking at, if somebody did a second story over a garage, so, say it's a two-car garage, so it'd be about twenty-four by twenty-four ground floor plate, and then you're, you know, you're allowed to go up, what, five, fourteen feet on the sidewalls, the way we were talking about it. So that would, right, so then you're, most of that space is usable, even though it's not full ceiling height. You're just slightly over five hundred square feet opportunity with that, but you've got to have a stair to get up there. So that eats into it. And does a stair count with that, or does it count below? I mean, you know, so I don't think five hundred is too far off. Six hundred might be a little much, but-
Gives you a little wiggle.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing I was thinking of is that when we first started talking about these, we were imagining people with parents, aging parents, which, in my mind, that could easily translate to wheelchairs. And then everything has to take on a little bit bigger proportions just to get a wheelchair around in it, so.
But you're not probably going to put the wheelchair on the second floor?
No, not on the second floor, but if you limited the downstairs to four or five hundred feet, now you're talking really tight borders trying to get a bathroom that's big enough, and doorways that are big enough, and just think that could be, I mean, that's in my mind, that's what a lot of them ought to be used for, not just to be having a rental place in the backyard.
Well, I guess where I was going is almost the ground floor has less, a single story has less impact than something that's up. And maybe that's where the floor, you can do, I don't know, I'm just throwing something out, numbers out here, but six hundred square feet if it's on the ground, or five hundred if it's-
More impact because it's, it's got this presence-
Right, right. It's a vault that the neighbor, you know, is going to experience on smaller lots.
Does it get too complicated from an enforcement viewpoint, especially if it was, if it was the CUP process, to be able to get a little bit of extra room to work with if you're doing a handicap accessible for a, you know, like for the elderly parents is the poster case?
The problem is the occupants change over time.
Yeah.
And so-
Yeah, so once it's built?
Once it's built, it gets larger, and then somebody who's not ADA, does not need accessible apartment, you know, moves into it. So-
Well, that might, would that work if it was just, you know, if it was an absolute ADA unit? Chances are, if it was ever rented again, that would-
Well, it, I think I hear what you're saying, Bill, but the other would be to say, the bathroom just got built bigger to have a turning circle in it for the wheelchair. That user leaves, and an able-bodied user doesn't really get more benefit of the space. I mean, they can swing their arms wider when they get out of the shower, but they don't get a spare bedroom because they're not allowed to-
I recognize that. The question becomes, establishing a standard based on a user in a point in time-
Yeah, right.
Where one person gets the benefit of a different regulation because of this user. I don't think that is something that we would-
No, you couldn't do it, but you could do it, say, I'm going to make it a fully ADA-compatible unit. Can I have the extra hundred square feet for that? Regardless of who the occupant is, it's built to a different standard.
Possibly. We didn't see any example of that in any other community.
It complicates it more.
Yeah.
Well, it does complicate it, but also, if you, if you say it has to be ADA compliant in order to get the extra space, there's a number of expenses that are associated with that, that are going to deter people from doing that just to get the hundred square feet.
Which, so the, kind of, maybe the advantage of that is that you could then cut down to five hundred square feet and still have it be possible if people have a handicapped elderly that they need to put in, that they want to put into a place, it'd still be possible.
So, Bill, it looks like you're going to show us a couple of things.
Just trying to get back to Wendy's question about this discussion we had some time ago, about the knee walls and the livable space. And we talked about where the ceiling height is greater than or equal to five feet, that would, what, what would constitute a livable space. And we were looking at actually existing homes. We just had snapped off photographs, took the footprint of an existing accessory structure, and we're kind of modeling if you had that height, what square foot footage you could have there. In this case, accessory unit was five hundred and sixty square feet was the footprint, putting the, taking into account the ceiling heights, you would have four hundred and ninety square feet. So you do lose, you know, that kind of ten percent of the floor area. But I, you know, still do think for a studio, one-bedroom, you can do it in four hundred and ninety square feet.
I think going back to the principle of limiting ourselves until we have to, let's start with the bigger and see how that, how that works out.
Six hundred was, you know, I don't have the table here with us, but you recall, we had the table all the communities, and six hundred was a very common maximum. Some urban areas like Seattle went higher, you know, up to nine hundred or so. But six hundred was a pretty common, consistent number that we saw.
Does the area occupied by a stairway normally get counted in the-
If it was an interior stairwell, we prob, I mean, you're not talking about a large number of square feet. We could certainly look at it. If it was interior, generally we would not exclude it. If we wanted to, we could certainly specify that it was a net excluding-
Yeah, I, that's where I was moving. It was the possibility of saying five hundred square feet excluding interior stairways.
So let's take Greg's suggestion of six hundred, but with the thought that there's some real sentiment around the table to squeeze it down a ways, and somehow in this process, we want to gather input as well as look at the credibility. I mean, there's some size where it's probably not worth doing. Between not worth doing and six hundred, where is the sweet spot?
And you recognize, we're not going to build, right, something that addresses all situations and all circumstances. You're just not going to be able to tailor it. It's too difficult to get down. But we do want to make sure it's, works for the greatest number, and within reason, and within manageability and ease in administration, so.
Okay. Maybe that would be a good way to state it, is, it sounds like we're kind of agreed on a six hundred square foot maximum, just as a, as a maximum potential size.
Yeah, I think I've heard a little sentiment that might even have a smaller maximum, but-
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but like, that that would be the biggest we would even consider.
But I don't hear anything around the table that's trying to get bigger than six hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. So can we move on? Good to move on?
We talked about height, if it happened to be a detached accessory structure. And currently, detached accessory structures have a top plate height limit of ten feet. And we, and if you're trying to take a detached structure, detached garage, and have living space above, that, you know, that, you're going to lose now thirty, forty percent of the area if you're starting out at ten at zero, and having to wait till you get to five feet to build that living space. And so we discussed the two mechanisms to try to address that, rather than going to full two-story accessory structures that tend to look like a little bit stacked structures, is to allow for that additional knee wall height, and then some dormer opportunities that allow you to expand kind of that livable space opportunity. So we were looking at fourteen feet, and dormers that could occupy fifty percent of the wall area.
Was that dormers fifty percent of one wall?
Oh, any wall.
So you could have-
Dormers on either side.
Dormers on both sides.
On four sides, correct.
Bill, would this have implications, the fourteen-foot, well, both of them, I guess, on other accessory structures?
I would anticipate, this section actually would not be unique to ADUs. This would be incorporated within the accessory structure standards, so that they were all treated equally.
Build my garage.
For your art studio, you get the same standard as somebody that's building it to have an ADU.
Okay. So we may have a bunch of accessory structures, ADUs or not, that start being taller than the ones we're used to seeing in town.
Right now, the top plate height is limited to ten, the maximum peak is limited, whatever the height limit is in the zoning district, so they can be up to, depending how steep or how large a structure, I mean, they can still be somewhat tall, but that top plate height is the only thing that's regulated right now.
So maximum height would stay the same, but the wall heights could be bigger.
Any discussion, reaction? Okay. Wendy, when you actually were trying to design one, something here was going to be essential to make it-
Well, ten feet is tall, because if you try to stay inside a normal two-car garage, and you're starting at ten, you don't get much left with much livable space, unless you make it, you know, an incredibly steep roof really quickly.
The dormers could help. The dormers could help in that situation.
Dormers could, you know, I had, when I was out on my, one of my runs, I saw a good example of somebody who sort of sneaked through an accessory. They used the space for something else other than a dwelling, but sometimes the impact of the dormers on the neighbor's side can be pretty intense. You might want to think about that if they're within a certain distance of the property line.
And the only issue you consider there is, a home can be five feet and be two stories.
Right, true, true. You're right, you're right. Yeah. It was, it was just, you know, but this garage happened to be out towards the front of the property, and the neighbors let it go through as a conditional use, and then they were pretty upset when they saw this, you know, massive thing kind of right next door. So it's, it just, it triggered something, like, maybe we should look a little bit at that, but I don't know which way it would follow.
The distinction is that you, there's a desire for maybe some privacy in the rear yard, except the home in the front, know that they're going to possibly be ten feet apart, you know, on a side lot line. But, you know, now that privacy in the rear yard gets intruded upon by something that's over the fence with the dormer and windows looking over the fence line. That, I mean, that's what I would expect, we'd see.
Are we going to, I don't know where your list is going, but I think another, we have the limitation on the access for emergency services. That's going to limit a whole lot of pieces of property from being able to put anything in a backyard, for example, right? Because there's just no way-
Or it'll push them to have to be with fire suppression systems installed.
So it either becomes extremely expensive with fire suppression, or you just can't, there's no way. Your house is taking up too much of the space. There's no room for access, so-
Correct. They need to be able to reach within a hundred and fifty feet, and a very deep lot is in the back. That's going to become an issue, and alleys generally don't satisfy fire access because they're not developed to the twenty-foot width.
So we're not talking about boodles and kaboodles of pieces of property that will even probably meet the most basic criteria.
And that's only for detached. So, you know, you still could have attached basement, attic, other situations.
Part of the reason why R1 and R2 might be more favorable places to put it structurally, because you got more, you got more lot space.
So I'm not hearing much sentiment one way or the other here. Kind of live with this and see what feedback we get.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
One space. This is my hot button, and I noticed in the survey-
It's not their button.
Yeah. The R3 and R4 were, no, my hot button is, I think this is an expense that is going to limit the number of ADUs that get developed, and I'd like to talk about not requiring it.
Well, I see it, I mean, I guess I'm seeing it through a specific lens, but I see ADUs accommodating primarily marginalized populations, either people who are elderly and probably not driving so much, or people who are disabled, and we have a huge disability population in Moscow, it's a center, who are living close in, and this is a way for them to function. And so, to me, when we allow boarding houses to not have off-street parking, and we are requiring an off-street parking space for an ADU, it seems like a waste of real estate to me, but-
Boarding houses aren't required to have off-street parking.
They don't.
It's a-
They don't, believe me.
I will say, under the code, if somebody is applying for a CUP for a boarding house, they have to have off-street parking.
Yeah, maybe if they apply now, but there are a lot of them that exist that don't have it. And I think the sentiment in the neighborhood is, we'd rather have them park on the street than see a huge parking lot all over, you know, that it doesn't really, it enables the home to conform more to the character of the neighborhood to not have a big parking lot, so it's a-
Until people start fighting over parking spaces on the street, and start trying to sign their own, I mean, people trying to put their own signage out about my spaces here and on the street.
It's really bad when you shovel your own-
Well, in our street, you can only park on one side of the street, so.
Wasn't that one of the, the big issues in Missoula when they tried to do it, was the parking?
Parking is always a concern, and I think if you look at the citizen survey as a whole, you know, it did, or-
I thought it wasn't. It was a surprising low concern.
All respondents, it was high. When you got to the R3 and R4 districts, it was definitely lower.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Yeah, but it's still over, if you add extremely important and very important, it's still fifty percent, over fifty percent.
Somehow I missed that, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's, that's kind of my, in a way, I agree with Nils. You know, there's no way around it. It is going to make it more expensive and more of a pain. But I really see this one as a, as being another potential cause of riot.
Yeah, probably so.
And the expense will vary, depending upon the situation. If you're off the alley, you just have to gravel a ten by twenty. It's not going to be a huge expense.
So it could be a permeable, I mean, I guess I worry about adding-
Unless it's a parking lot, it doesn't have to be paved. So, single-family, two-family generally aren't required to be paved areas, so.
So you can make it permeable, that would be.
But you may have other situations where it's a curb cut and approach, and, you know, that is more expensive. So it depends.
So may, my preference would be to see if staff could bring us a couple of options in here, some, some ways to, and maybe that's by zoning district, or, because again, at some lot size, you may not be able to do it at all, because finding the space for the parking, as well as finding the space for the ADU, where you can end up parking in the front yard or something, which becomes sort of an impact on the neighborhood that we hadn't intended. But I'm kind of listening if you-
I think that's good. See what the options are and see if we can come up with an option.
I'm going to ask for a little bit more direction. I'm just not sure if I understand what the-
Some ways to have zero.
Yeah. You just put a zero there.
Come up with something brilliant that we all agree on.
That's what we'd come on, you forward.
Yeah, I just need to know the parameters of what this, what it would look like in order to craft some language to achieve what it is you're hoping to achieve.
For what? For what?
For the parking.
The parking.
My mind is zero required and the owner will figure out whether the neighborhood is such that the owner can and wants to build it.
And if that's, because this is a group, then we'll just change that to zero.
Like I say, I hear a ticking sound.
But, but from the standpoint of, of getting more public input, could we get public input around two options?
Yeah, yeah, that would be true.
With the pros and cons of each.
You can't. The only risk is the more options you put out there, the more difficult it will be to assess what they're reacting to. So, I just-
Well, it would be, it would be, we'd never consider requiring two parking spots for an ADU, yes? Am I right on that?
I hope not.
So, it actually is.
Seems like you're turning into a parking lot.
We, we got classic binary choice here, it's either, either zero or one.
Well, or-
You know, with Nils' idea, have zero and then fashion the question, you know, do you want to see, do you like this? Do you want to see one? Something like that, so you have a specific response you can get. But I, I mean, I agree that given the nature of the proposed use, like Wendy said, how often is it gonna be that you would have somebody in there who would need that, that spot? What's the impact could be as a requirement we'll wanna put on up front that might not be serving a purpose?
If you have two college students each having a car, I mean, you're gonna have a wide range of users.
The language that concerns me is additional, requiring additional. Additional to what? If you, if you have a single-family home that has four existing, they have a two-car garage and, and space for two other cars that they need, do you really need to require an additional spot for that?
No.
Or do you have to come up with language that says for the dwelling and the accessory, you need a maximum of or a minimum of three spots?
It'd be one above the minimum required for the single-family dwelling, so there's one additional space. So, a single-family home has to have two off-street parking spaces, so they would have to provide one more. There'd be many situations where it's in, in existing older developed neighborhoods where they have none.
None, it's all street parking.
And so, they would have to provide one for the ADU for the anticipation of the new use, the expanded use that they would be out.
And that seems reasonable in that case.
Yeah, that, that would be the standard. Now, we have to evaluate if they have a two-car garage and two spaces in the driveway and tandem configurations of different users, and actually we have that on agenda to look at that. But, but assuming that they had none, it's a no-existing neighborhood and they're, they're placing an ADU on the property, if it was one, they would just have to add the one. Or if they only had two for the home available, they would have to add one. But that, that was the intent.
But you, not that you just, in every case would have to add an additional space no matter what. That, that seems oppressive.
So, what do we wanna do?
Well, I, I could see hanging the zero out there to see who shoots at it, but I'm not, not sure I like getting shot at too much. And again, I'm not sure how much credence to put in the, the small sample of our after-workshop questionnaires, but over fifty percent in each of the three histograms there said that parking was an issue. So, I think if we put it, that's either as, um, let's see, extremely important or- Extremely important plus very important is over fifty percent, I think, in each of the three cases. I, I think if we say zero, we're gonna hear about it.
Yeah, I think that's a good reason to do that.
Yeah.
Put it at zero and then see what the people that feel it's worthwhile even to respond, see what they say. And-
I'm, I'm looking around the table and I see at least somewhat noses going up and down, so shall we say zero for, as a straw man and proceed on with-
I would support that.
I think that's okay.
Okay, we've got at least as a straw.
Asking for trouble, but I'll go along.
You're just forcing the water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why do you wanna sample the water with?
And I want the torches and pitchforks concession at the hearing.
Just, you know, pretty much all, there are some that don't. But one additional, one additional, one additional, one additional.
One of our readings is-
One of the comments I was intending to make but forgot was that even granny may have visitors.
True.
Okay, so, is it?
Is that, is your spreadsheet available somewhere?
It is posted on the project website.
Okay.
So, we have a, yeah, we've got a, a, on the planning page is a link to the ADU that has all that information.
Good.
Maybe I missed this when I was out of the room, but if we were in multifamily, we would be saying how many cars you have or spaces you have to have per bedroom.
Correct. Only when you're three or more bedrooms.
Only three.
If you're, if you're one bedroom-
Well, I've got a two-bedroom, two-bedroom house and I'm adding another bedroom to my Somebody could make a case that there's an inequality there, that you're requiring me with multifamily to provide according to the number of bedrooms, but you're telling me that if it's in a single-family neighborhood, that I'm not required to do that. I can tack on this other bedroom, whether it's attached or not, and not have that responsibility.
That already kind of exists in, so, single-family, there's no limit to the number of bedrooms you have in a home and there's only two spaces that are required for a single family.
That's true.
So, so that does already exist, but when you look at, you know, rental units per se, or apartments, yeah, a one bedroom's one point two-five, a two bedroom's one point seven-five, and three or more bedrooms is point seven-five per bedroom. So, you know, it would be, if it was a, you know, zero, it's obviously much less than if you were having a one-bedroom apartment at one point two-five.
I was just trying to think about in terms of fairness across the neighborhood.
But it already, yeah, the bedrooms, it's still one dwelling unit, there generally is an occupancy limit in the one dwelling unit, four unrelated for the most part, six in certain circumstances. So, regardless of how many bedrooms you have, if you're looking at unrelated people, it doesn't really change that now. Very large family, there's no limit on the number of related individuals that can reside in the home, so you can have six driving-age kids and parents.
I keep going back to, you know, really trying to get at the, at the center of accessory dwellings and, and to me, they, they really, I guess through this whole discussion, I've always felt that, that they are indicative of a dependency on the main unit. There's some relationship between the people, the person who lives in that unit and, and the house, and maybe I'm just not seeing that right, but-
It can be-
There, there's a need for them to, to live on site, whether it's an older person or whatever, and that's why you would build an accessory dwelling. But then that changes over time, I suppose.
Yeah, it's, it's not limited to that.
Yeah.
So, and, and that's the thing that we all need to clarify, we're talking about mother-in-law or granny's land, but that's not-
Really what it is, yeah.
It's, that's why we call it accessory dwelling, just because it is an apartment and it could be your mother, mother-in-law, or it could be a couple of college students.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, oops. And another really good reason to have this be a possibility is for people that are elderly, house-rich, and cash poor, in which case they can actually put in some, some kind of extra income or even they can move into the ADU and rent out their house.
Or have, and have somebody there helping them, yeah, to-
Okay. Bill, June. There we go.
Um, if you live in a, in an area that has covenants and restrictions, there could be restrictions on this having to be a related person, couldn't there? And I'm only pulling on, because I have family that live in a pretty elegant neighborhood back home and, and they skirted around it several times to have younger family members from extended family live up with them for a while, you know, set them on the street and narrow kind of thing. And technically, they were, they were on the hairy edge because they were not immediate family members, they were like nephews of cousins kind of thing. So, that's gonna preclude it in some neighborhoods potentially too, right?
Yeah, covenants or private restrictions have to be enforced by the homeowners association. We have very few, I mean, pretty much every recent subdivision has had CCNRs and association that's been recorded but never functions, unless there's a reason for it to function.
Okay.
So, if you have PUDs that have private snow removal, landscape maintenance, and have a need to collect dues for that service, they function. Every other subdivision, you never see an association ever again, even though it's recorded and you'll get a copy of it when you retire a report when you purchase a property, but they never meet. There's no, there's no purpose for their being other than to market the property when they're, when the realtor's showing to them.
Right. So, there's no enforcement. I realize the city has no enforcement there.
Here, there, I mean, there are, there are areas that have very active associations and do actively enforce. In this community, I have not heard of it happening in the last, you know, fifteen years. And the only active associations that I'm aware of are those that are in green acres or candid or temple where they have to because they, they need to pay to plow snow on private private streets.
Okay.
Those, those will function, but others, I'm-
I was just thinking that might be another thing that would win where these could be the key.
And it could. It's not gonna be in the older neighborhoods, it's not gonna be in the two in multifamily, it's gonna be in the single-family districts and only if an association realizes that they're, they have that and they want to try to enforce it.
Occupancy.
I would go with two occupancy max.
So, a couple lives there and they have a baby, they have to leave?
They move.
I'm just throwing out, Derek.
It's important for the baby to keep quiet.
And this would be, end up being complaint-driven.
Correct.
And if the three of them managed to live fine in six hundred square feet and nobody complained, it might go on for a while.
It would be a limitation that would be along with the owner occupancy and the occupancy limit would be recorded deed restriction so that it was legally recorded, but, you know, we're not knocking on doors and looking for-
I heard a baby crying. Check, check the closet for babies.
Or just smell the garbage.
You were pregnant last week.
Okay, I think, I think we're reasonably comfortable with all, with all the wrinkles that'll happen along the edge. Okay. Design requirements, this would be adding language to specify that the ADU have, have some design elements that relate to the primary structure or-
And doesn't this fall into what we were talking about at the beginning of this meeting that the legislature goes through?
Not on residential projects.
Oh, not on residential.
That's only, that's only commercial-
Oh, I missed that one. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, all right. Never mind.
So, there are communities that, that say that the roof pitch should be consistent with the home, that the siding material, paint color, you know, should be, so it looks like it's compatible and you're not taking a nice home and putting a vinyl-clad box with a flat roof in the backyard. So, that's likely a worst-case scenario.
But I have to make one brief comment about that law. If it's only to commercial buildings, that makes even less sense than it did to start with. Yeah.
Attentive to the mayor's letter. Kurt says even less sense. But can we come back to this topic?
Yes.
The problem I have with requiring this is we don't require it for, I'm looking at Bill, for garages or other, other things that a person might build as a separate, or even as an addition, right? You could build an addition that was completely incompatible-
No residential design standards.
No residential-
There's some around town.
And we have some examples, now, one might say that, you know, it's unfortunate, or one might say that, that the cow's out of the barn already, but it seems that since you could take an existing structure and rehab it into an ADU, it's awkward to impose a design review if you set out to build a new structure or even to do a remodel that I wanna stay below the height limit by putting a flat roof over here.
I think there's a lot of self-regulation built into this, if, we haven't gotten there yet, but if there's a requirement that one of the, either the single-family residents or the ADU owner occupied, they have an incentive to make it look nice like they do now when they put on an addition and is, they've gotta keep resale value. It is, these aren't gonna be, these aren't going to be apartment houses where they're an investment, they're gonna be places where the owners are living. So, I'm not sure the design requirements really are necessary as part of the process.
Yeah, what it, what it's gonna address is that one guy, you know, that thinks that-
It's a metal building and a-
Yeah, puts a metal building and insulates it and, yeah.
Because it's a low-cost way to get a rental income on the property.
And which he could do if it's not an ADU, he could just, it's a garage.
Yeah. Good. You know, the, the only thing that I, the only benefit is if we want ADUs to be well-accepted in the community, ones that look nice and compatible to the home are more likely to be well-accepted and reduce the risk of having a backlash of something, of the one example that spawns some repeal. But the counterpoint is adding design standards increases cost and diminishes the likelihood that you're gonna get ADUs in your community, that's what you're trying to incentivize or trying to create. So, and that's why it's maybe, maybe not.
What's the one that makes everyone angry and things look like, you know?
What percentage of ADUs in these other communities, I don't know if you know this number or not, are built into the existing structure and how many of them are built on as a separate, a detached structure?
I couldn't tell you. I, I don't have that information.
It seems like the majority of them are gonna be something that's added into the existing structure, you know, whether it be something partitioned off, a floor of a two-story house will become a, a separate deal, or the garage that's already there is gonna be turned into that, or rather than building it, pouring another foundation and building another structure, it seems like the majority of them are gonna be built into the existing.
I, I think you may find that most are new detached structures just because the effort of altering the existing structure, unless you've got a good unfinished basement that lends itself well, I just don't know. I really don't know.
It's just a question that comes to mind and as far as design goes.
Yeah.
How, how often are you gonna have to design review if they're, most of them are-
If it's in the principal home, it's just in the basement or something, then this wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be applied, but if it was just before those detached structures were built.
What's the information from other cities with regard to design standards? Does, do we have examples of language that-
Yeah.
Design standards are imposed, what do they look like?
Missoula's language is, is fairly consistent with what we've seen across the board, generally consistent, roof pitch, roof materials, siding materials. It's not, it's just general consistency with the principal structure that it's accessory to. And I can, I think we've got, I think we handed out copies of Missoula's and early materials and I could certainly, actually might be able to find that here.
And did you say that there aren't any other areas that we have a, a residential design standard?
Except for the townhouse coordinates that we passed, there is a, we do not.
I'm looking around the table to see if I can get a sense where you wanna go.
I'm just trying to figure out how you would even craft it.
Yeah.
I mean, what you really would hope for is a consistency between the main house and the accessory dwelling, so there's a relationship between them, but how do you define consistency and what would define it?
What happens if it's an ugly main house?
Then you, then you, then you're either perpetuating ugliness-
That's a real good point.
Compatibility of ugliness. The I is in the, the beauty is in the eye of the-
Sorry, according to the terms of your conditional use permit, you have to tear down your house.
You have to do a remodel of the house first before you can do it.
I'd, I'd say my input would be no design standards and see what, what the reaction is. Again, I think, I do think there's a lot of incentive to keep things consistent or nice anyway.
I can, I can see it being, in reality, it's gonna be a very rare problem and so that, that might make it worthwhile to have the no design standards just as the trial balloon, but then maybe have a, maybe again, it's something that we should present to the public with just two possibilities of no design standard or, or some kind of, you know, basically lifting Missoula's language.
Either some, this is just some sample language, it's probably a little bit difficult to read there, so.
Yeah, I can read it. I think you just wanna sell more torches and pitchforks.
Guy's got to make a buck somehow.
Shall construction be the same siding roofing materials as the primary dwelling? Shall it relate to design the primary residence mall materials, window types?
Shall it relate to?
Exterior finish, roof pitch trim siding must match the primary residence. Match the main house for windows, siding, roof style, entry door. Should be consistent design and appearance with the primary structure, specific of the roof pitch, siding materials, color, window treatment of the ADU shall be the same. Match or complement design materials and style of existing building. Must be substantially the same. Exterior design, I mean, there's, there's a lot of them that require that.
Consistency.
Just general consistency, which is not hard to discern as staff looking at a photograph of the home and the elevation of the building. If it's dramatically different, it's dramatically different. It's substantially the same and substantially the same.
We also have the language in the neighborhood conservation districts for infill that it needed to look like it fit in the neighborhood. So maybe not necessarily matching that house, but looking like it belongs in this neighborhood. Would that be less oners?
It's a more difficult palette to match because it's easier to look at this, the primary that is, are we going to compare it to 12, 15 structures? And, I mean, you can, you can do a survey and say, well, general predominant roof pitch is this, predominant siding style and material is this, but it's a much more extensive review process than just look at the home and see that this is consistent with it. If you have a home and it's corrugated steel siding and the home is wood lap, you know that's not consistent in materials. If the home has a 612 and this is a 312, you know, the pitch isn't the same. If it's wood, you know, asphalt shingle siding, composite siding, shingle roof and this is a metal roof, it's not the same. So those are easy things that staff to review to make sure it's consistent.
I was making a harder grade.
The neighborhood, is it, is it more difficult? Now, you, you have to survey the neighborhood, you have to establish a boundary and define what are the predominant architectural characteristics, styles in the neighborhood, and then that palette book would have to be what you would use to judge projects in that area. That's how I'd recommend the approach.
It's kind of a variation of the ugly house problem. So if the house has vinyl siding and the person says, well, I'd like to put cedar lap siding on the ADU, I mean, would they do it?
We would have to look at that. In the audit, in that inverse, when they want to make something prettier than the house, I don't think we'd try to create hurdles.
My house doesn't look a great deal like most of the ones around it.
So what did I hear? No design standard, design standard?
Let's, let's hang that out there too.
Zero parking, we should say no design standard.
Not say anything.
I think I would.
Oh, okay.
It's already been thrown out.
I would at most like it to be very clear that there's, there's two tracks before we present it to the public that it could be zero design standards or it could be basically the Missoula language.
Compatibility.
Yeah, compatibility rather than identical. And if, I guess if I had to do a choice, I would go with compatible actually. I think that's a broad enough standard.
Complement.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, just getting down to the nitty-gritty of preservation philosophy, for example, in an historic neighborhood, we have a national historic district that's getting expanded and the preservation idea is that you don't want to replicate the past with a new structure because then it confuses what's historic and what's not historic, but you want compatibility. So you don't want it to look exactly like it was built in 1880 when it was actually built in 2015. So that would be one example I can think of of overregulation if you tried to say it has to match, you know, the existing house design.
But have we not, same time, given org to wars to folks who've done alterations or to garages to match the architecture of the home?
There's a difference between being compatible and being replicating. See what I mean? Yeah. So, because a lot of times you can't find those materials anymore, for example, so you want compatibility but not exact. That's all I was getting at.
Yeah.
Like not use the word...
Yeah, I would say, I'd go with compatible.
More, a little, yeah, it's a little looser for interpreting, but it makes more sense to me.
So now are we saying one thing, which is there is a design standard and it is compatible? Or are we still...
Like I say, I'd prefer to somehow get more feedback from the public with these being the two major options, but if I had to choose right now, I would go with compatible.
As opposed to Jim saying go with none and then offer compatible as...
Aspirational. I mean, maybe it's like an aspirational...
Or as, this isn't going to fly at none. This is going to fly with zero parking. Let's put in these, can we make this fly?
That's option B.
Negotiating towards a compromise rather than...
Yeah, I'm just trying to, and I'm gonna, my babysitter's gonna get out of time here shortly.
It's like, what's our next move?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to visualize. What, what we discussed previously was the, the general broad no proposal, take input on how people felt they should be, you know, allowed and standards, and then develop proposal and get a reaction to that proposal. Now I'm here, we're talking about options that we present, and so I'm just, I'm just trying to kind of think through and that, that's, and we can do that. I'm, I'll have to just kind of give it a little bit of thought about how that gets presented. Are we going to provide on each of these two options and have people vote which one they like best and then take that to solidify into proposal? Which we can structure. It, it just comes down to how do we structure the meeting and what are we asking the public to respond to and in what manner are we looking for that response? And I, it's just different than...
Putting a proposal out there and saying, do you like it?
Giving feedback on that proposal, but we can do it different. It doesn't mean we can't do it differently. It's just different than what I...
I'll look at it, John. I think that you ought to keep in mind that where these are going to be built are going to be behind the existing structure. They're not going to be on the side because of the setbacks. They're not going to be in the front because of the setbacks. They're going to be behind it. They'll be on the backside of the lots so people are not going to see them. And if they are on the backside of the lot, really, we've got eight people here and we got eight different ideas of what compatible would be. And so I think that, you know, that horse is, just keep in mind where these buildings are actually, these structures are going to be. They're not going to be seen from the street. They're going to be seen from the backyards.
Well, I would put in usually.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to say for more than nine out of 10.
Yeah.
Do you want to take the two options forward?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. Next, Bill?
Yes.
No question.
Yes.
These are all just general. We don't have to make a decision on those.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Do you need to make a call to address the babysitter issue?
I think we've had about 15 minutes.
Okay. North Main Street zoning review. You'll recall that we had some conversation about this last time. Staff had looked at, driven by the council's goal of extending the sense of downtown north of Main Street, staff had then looked at a general area of what? A to E and a couple of blocks on either side of Main and trying to think, was there a different zone that would perhaps use zoning to move things in the direction that would fulfill the council's objective? And I think the outcome of last time was it's complicated.
As you may recall, this is the general area. This is essentially the north boundary at E looking south. I'm going to flip through these quickly because we've already looked through these, but we all are kind of aware of the general character. A large section of, of this area has a five-lane US 95 going through the middle of it with two couplets that break off the north and southbound traffic, so I'm going to, I'm going my own way, so I'm going to get past all of those. I think we already looked through that. We do have kind of this remnant of more of a consistent downtown feel where there are older buildings and some newer that are, that are up close to the street. That does tend to break down as you get north of C and certainly in the D Street area. I'm just going to get through these. So this was the general area we were looking at, if you may recall, so going from A to E, from Washington over to really Almond. This was the zoning that currently exists, which was some industrial for St. John's, but predominantly motor business with residential office and multifamily residential to the east of the area. We kind of looked at the available on-street parking. It's somewhat limited in this area, but some on D west of Main, some on Main between A and C, and some over on North Jackson, on the one, well, it's two-way section of Jackson north of C Street. The existing buildings, we have a number of them that are non-inconformous with the 10-foot streets, front setback as required in the motor business district. That's probably the greatest non-compliance element. As we look at uses, predominantly, the uses are generally compliant with the motor business district with only some residential uses possibly being in non-conformity, so there are some existing single-family homes on Main. I don't know, even though there's even a residential use still in the Stukey's, Stukey property any longer, but that's the only element that's, that is generally a non-conforming use within the motor business district. We looked at general business, UMC, and we had a, probably a greater increase in non-conformity with respect to use. It may address the setback consideration, but we, we did tend to create non-conforming status, especially on some fairly recent investments in the corridor, so that creates a bit of a complication looking at changing the zoning. So some, just some general observations, and I think we're kind of summarizing what I heard in the conversation. The roadways in this area significantly impact the character. So having the couplets in 95 through this means it's really not going to have the same kind of character as Main Street in, in a lot of ways because I think it is substantially impacted and negatively impacted because of that. Streetscape enhancements, you know, probably with street trees and lighting could have the largest impact of extending the perceived area, downtown area north. If you look, the trees just kind of end at A and nothing else comes north.
Uh-oh.
That's your babysitter talking.
My laptop is shutting down.
Earlier it said something about you need more power.
It did. I was down to 7%. I think it made it.
I have a hammer in my bag.
I carry a computer adjusting hammer with me too. Bring up some power.
Where do we plug it in?
I think I'm probably going to be quicker here. Plug it up pretty good in time.
But while we wait, I almost, I almost got, it, it seems like the biggest issue is just simple aesthetics as you come into town for the, from the north here. And so I'm kind of questioning if there, if zoning is, is the best tool to use to try to fix that. I'm wondering if there are other, other options. I mean, I think it would be good to change, to do the usual, changing the zoning to take care of as many of the non-conforming uses as we can, but I don't know, are there other, other tools that can be used?
Can we get...
Yeah, because I think like Bill just said, you know, the major impact is, is the trees ending. I mean, if you imagine coming over that hill and there were 20-foot trees on each side of the street, I mean, that would make the biggest difference in the world. I think that would make as much difference as you could do, given the fact you have those two couplets to deal with. I mean, they're always going to look like the highway. Always got now the Walgreens, Walgreens in there, which is, you know, another strip mall kind of development. Only way to really improve that would be a nice row of trees along the front, but commercial people don't like that.
Apologize for my laptop dying. Motor Business District is probably most compatible with the existing uses in the area, especially recent significant investments in the area with HON and the gas station and, I guess to a certain extent Walgreens. Many structures though do not meet the motor business setback requirements. That's really the not, the greatest non-conformity is actually the setback element. And I included this, there is a desire to increase opportunity for residential uses above, behind, commercial uses within the study area and outside. There's, there has been, I guess, an interest expressed by the commission to try to create greater opportunities, especially near the downtown core where market would seem that that would be appropriate. We had the anytime fitness, had to go through a planning unit development to add the residential uses above, and the question was why do they have to go through a PUD if this is something we want to try to promote? In our office, we've also received several inquiries of projects even outside this study area in the motor business district looking to try to create increased opportunities for residential uses above motor business, these own properties where there was a commercial use on the ground floor and they were looking for their residential use above.
Do people really want to live on such noisy streets? I don't know. I mean, I'm...
Anytime, they sold theirs before they were finished or they had theirs rented before they were finished.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are, I mean, same thing as living downtown, even, even just being in a downtown urban environment, you know, you have to deal with it. And there are techniques for soundproofing that can be employed. So some possible recommendations, leave the existing motor business district and consider some amendments to the district. There is a possibility we could allow for a reduction of the front setback where it's consistent with building placement and character of the surrounding area through a conditional use permit. So we can have a specified minimum front setback, but we could have a, a CUP to reduce that setback requirement where it's consistent with that area. It's, it's a better tool than a variance, which is very difficult to achieve, but a CUP could evaluate the surrounding area, impact upon visibility. We don't really want to reduce, I don't think we want to reduce the front setback in the motor business district as a whole because on the highway corridor, driveway approaches and visibility, keeping the buildings back 10 feet, which is not that far, but at least enough to, to increase visibility, I think we want to maintain, but there can be a process that we could look at allowing for that reduction. So if we have a situation of a site wanting to be redeveloped, but and that is the character of that area, that that could occur. And the second would be to possibly look at the allowance of residential uses above and behind commercial uses in a similar manner as is, as is allowed in the central business district in the MB district too. So those are maybe two possible things to consider to promote. If we add, you know, if we had more redevelopment opportunities and residential being placed above in this corridor, that would help reinforce and replicate some of the downtown area and help change the character a little bit. And then providing an opportunity to address the one kind of non-conformity, the most predominant non-conformity, which is the setback in that area by allowing for a conditional use permit to reduce that. Might be two ways to do it without placing uses into a non-conforming status or trying to force the district on an area that it just doesn't, may not fit. So those are some observations and possible considerations that I just wanted to put out for the commissions.
Do you see any particular big downside in allowing residential uses?
No, I think it's only going to be pursued where it's a location that they view that as being a desirable activity. So, you know, but we've had, you know, in the past, there were conversations about adding a couple stories on top of the east side and adding some residential there. I mean, there, there could be commercially located properties that, that would be, you know, a suitable use.
So it's good on the, it's good on the infill principle?
So broadly, do we want staff to proceed with bringing back to us something more refined along the lines of these modifications? In other words, move down the path towards a legislative change?
So, so it's kind of a hybrid is what you're proposing where you have to do a conditional use permit to get those changes that aren't normally allowed under motor business?
The production is setback.
Okay, just that?
Just that.
Yeah, okay. Not the residential use.
Correct. I mean, residential could be a CUP. Actually, in the GB district, residential uses are conditionally permitted use. It's not specific, it's not specified that they have to be above and behind a commercial user, but it is a conditionally permitted use. And I think there would be an intervening step where we would formulate whatever recommendations the commission would have for the council's consideration because of this is being related to the council goal. But before we moved down any legislative process, we would report back to the council to say we've evaluated this aspect of the council's goal. These are a couple actions we think would help support the council's goal and, and these are the commission's recommendations. the commission's recommendations in response to them.
And then ask the council to direct, should we proceed or not?
Should we proceed, correct.
That's right.
You know, I can't really see what one would look at if you were evaluating a conditional use permit for residential uses above and behind. You know, what, what criteria would make Motor Business more or less suitable? I don't think the CUP necessarily fits. I'm inclined to say.
I would agree with you.
Use it right.
And we'd be kind of actually coming back to what the MB District was 25 years ago, where residential uses were allowed.
It's allowing a mixed-use district, basically.
And before, they were allowed, just allowed as residential use. So you could put an apartment complex, ground floor. I do like the element of keeping it either above or behind a commercial user, so that it does promote the integration, mixture of uses.
We have a member of the public who said to me earlier that he would like to think about having some comments, and so I bet it sounds like we've about wrapped up the discussion with the chair. If you just want to come up here to this chair next to Joe and Wendy, they don't bite, Ann needs your name and address for the record.
Your Ann. My name is Greg Alman, A-H-M-A-N-N, and I live at 1755 Atzerk Street. And I'm fairly new member of the community. I moved here about a year and a half ago. And I'm in the process of negotiating a contract to purchase a building on Main Street. And it is north of A, and it's on, or it's the old Grange building. And I was wanting to see if you guys would consider rezoning or making amendments to the current zoning. And what we were looking at is that building's been sitting very low occupancy over the last 10 years. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why this guy wants to get rid of it. He's not putting a lot of money into it. And it's a little bit rundown. He's in TLC. And we would like to do that, including do a little facelift out front and looking at the planters there. He has a few that aren't being mended or cared for very well. And we'd like to make that attractive. But, but one of the things that we're looking at while we're looking at this property is, you know, how, how do we make it work, and how do we get the numbers to work for us to purchase it? And we, so we walked through the whole building, looking at the current occupancy. They pay very little, those, the folks that are in there. There's a couple of vacancies in the front, the business area, and we'd like to bring some business in there. We'd like to spruce it up. And in fact, one of the other businesses that's there isn't really conducive to business. It's a daycare that's in the front, which we would like to try to change that and get more professional business in there. So we'd like to make it attractive for that. And one of the ways that we looked at making it attractive and making it affordable is to get some occupancy in there that would be residential. Right now, there's currently one in there. And there's an area adjacent to that current residential apartment that has a kitchen, bathroom, and a layout for another apartment. Unfortunately, apparently, it's not allowed because it's Motor Business. So it's being used currently as a storage room for, I don't know, about a couple thousand books, I guess, and very low rent space because of that. It's in a dark, unlit area in the backside of the building, on the backside of the business space. And what we were thinking, my partner's, my sister, who was sitting in here earlier, is if we can get that rezoned or a variance for that and have a couple more residents in there, then that would allow us to keep the price of the square footage down and reasonable for new businesses, to be, to attract them to the community, to enhance growth in the main business corridor here in Moscow. And I've worked with my father-in-law for about 15 years, and he's a commercial property owner, manager. And, and he's just kind of showed me some of these things to kind of look at. And I really like this location. I like the building. I think it's an attractive building as far as the brick. The rest of the fascia needs a little bit of TLC, but I think that could really enhance, you know, the entry into Moscow, create some growth. And it's already set up for it. So I'm just asking to continue that. And to the south, obviously, you've seen that they already have that. And to the north, Anytime Fitness has it. So I would just like to put that out there. And we do want to, once again, I mean, where you're, you know, as far as a businessman, where we make the most money is from a business coming in there, a certain business space. So we're not looking to change that. What we're looking for is, how can we, you know, keep that square footage price down and attract new businesses? And then obviously, even new businesses need a low overhead. So if we could attract them with a low square footage price, then we could bring new businesses into Moscow. So is there any questions?
Is this another one that is within the 10-foot setback or not? Just trying to pronounce.
Yes, it's right out on the road.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And it's an attractive brick building.
Yeah.
Except for the wood fascia that's on the carport. And we do have our own off-street parking. I think there's 30-some stalls.
There's good parking on the side.
Which is fantastic for this complex. And I talked to the church, Impact Church is in there. And they have some 60 members, and they said that the times that they use, have high use, they don't have any problems with parking. It's sufficient parking there, and then there's a parking lot or two around the area that they're able to use. So we don't see any preceding problems with parking.
So the two things that are kind of on the table here would be to make, obviously, a process, us making some recommendations, council letting us, that looks like it's interesting, us then actually drafting an ordinance, going through here, and it marches back up to council again. So it's not a quick deal.
Yeah, it'll be a while.
But, but the two ideas, allowing this reduced setback. So right now, you're already encroaching on the current required setback. And allowing the residential use above and behind, which seemed to be what you were describing.
Unfortunately, in this case, it's not above, it's just behind. It's a kind of an odd feeling.
Above or behind, either one.
Yeah, okay, I see. Either or.
It's to not be on the...
Right, right.
On the street-level front facade. So above.
And I'm in agreement with that. And I'm just encouraging you to move forward with this.
Yeah.
You know, as a, as a new businessman and new to Moscow, I brought my family here. I got five kids, four of them are with us. And, and one of the reasons we moved here is because it's a smaller town, more family-oriented and friendly, with a lot of activity, you know, and four of my kids for advancement. And, and so I just jumped right into being a new businessman, and I just appreciate that you guys listen to me. I appreciate that you guys have good dialogue here. And really, you know, I, I think that there's a key. My father-in-law owns, with his partner, he owns about $100,000 square feet of commercial property. He's got about 30 tenants, and I managed those leases in that property for over 12 years. But one of the things I learned from him is really the relationship with your tenant, taking care of them. But also, he kept his rates at a rate that was lower than any other commercial people. And this is in Yakima City, Yakima, Washington. And he kept his rates low enough that he had the most occupancy of all the other people around. And I think that, you know, because of that, we had a lot of businesses that came from other areas into our complex, which, which brought businesses into town. I, you know, there's wholesale floors, there's fast and always in there. There's, there's just a whole diverse amount of different people. Balfour Construction's in there, they're a huge reconstruction business. But I think that they chose our complex because of its proximity to town over there, and then also the price was kept low. And so he had occupancy that was probably over 90% in the time that I managed for him. So, so we hope to do that here.
Thank you for coming and sharing your perspective, and sorry that you spent as long as you did.
You lasted longer than my students.
I really enjoyed it. I learned, learned a lot, learned how this works. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think, going, going, gone, we're going to ask staff to help us advance the proposal to council to see if they want us to actually take this baby route.
Good idea.
Kind of my, my question while you were plugging in again is, are there any other real tools to just sort of deal with sort of an aesthetic, get more trees in there kind of approach?
Well, I think that's, there is. It's in the public right away. I think that'll be a city responsibility. And there is funding that has been identified and budgeted for that activity. We just haven't quite come to the design yet. So that will just happen.
Can somebody take those pictures that you have of the, from A to E, and Photoshop some trees in there to see what that would look like?
Yeah, and I do have that.
Present that to sell that idea.
We did that as part of the beautification project. So we focused on the highway corridors. And that, it was a city entryway, and we were ending at C. I did have them extend down to A. And so I've got plan view as well as perspective drawings of trees down that corridor. And so we do have that already prepared for that.
And if we could simulate the build-out to the...
Now you're asking for what I don't have. No, but yeah, I mean, you, you can. Then certainly I could have Dale sketch that, sketch that in.
So I think we got you an answer on this item.
How about number eight? Eight, we wait until next?
Okay, postpone that. Because there's some complications in that, down the parking corridor.
There are. That's going to take a little while.
All right.
So your babysitter ran out.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Put that babysitter in the minute there. All right. So we will postpone number eight, and unless there's something else, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.